Thank you for attending the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting of March 25, 2025. Need a roll call?
County Commissioners Bartlett, Cruz.
Here.
Devoe.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
James. Deputy Director Lazar.
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here. Can I have the announcement of the open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meeting law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting, filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Commissioner Duffy? Needing to pledge?
My pledge. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. Also, we lost two members of the public for Passaic County. Stephen Tilton, Sr., want to offer our deepest condolences to the Tilton family, especially his loving wife Judith Ann Tilton. Mr. Tilton was the chairman of Schumacher Chevrolet Group, the largest selling Chevrolets in the state of New Jersey. Schumacher Automotive Group has also been a benefactor to the many county of Passaic events, especially the Passaic County Fair. Also, we lost Gail Oakham, wife of Clark Oakham from Wayne, who has been a good friend to Passaic County Commissioners of the county of Passaic. Thank you. Approval of minutes of March 11, 2025?
Make so moved.
Second. Made by Cruz. Cruz and Duffy.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Devoe.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, approval of proclamations. Need a motion? Make a motion.
Second.
Which are made by Duffy, second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Devoe.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, administrative report.
Thank you, Director. Tonight, we have our Women's History Month celebration, which can be presented by Commissioner Lazar. Before I turn it over to you, Commissioner, I just want to recognize the many dignitaries we have in the room. Halden Council President Carlos Amet, our Passaic County Clerk, Daniel Ireland Nimhoff, and her deputy county clerk, Nusa Towich, Under Sheriff Narth Apache, Passaic County Technical Institute Board President, Mike Kasha, and Commissioner Damaris Solomon, Woodland Park Councilwoman Christine Tizio, former Patterson Board of Ed Commissioner Manny Martinez, Passaic County Community College trustee Taiana Poe, Passaic County Improvement Authority Commissioner Mike Gramaglia there in the back, Passaic Board of Ed Commissioners Judith Sanchez and Tanya Mello, and Melanie Holmes, representing Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill, and Joe Sabbath, our new superintendent at PCTI. So, thank you all for coming. And Commissioner Lazar.
Okay. Take all my stuff with me. Okay. Come on in, Keesh. Welcome, everyone, to the 2025 Women's History Month Celebration. You know, I'm going to just let you know that the theme for this year is moving forward together, woman educating and inspiring generations. And that highlights the contributions of women in education, mentorship, and leadership. Those are three things that we need so desperately this year and moving forward. But, you know, and as history's shown us, women don't retreat, right? We rise, we persist, and we lead. So, without further ado, yeah, we're going to start this presentation today because we have some phenomenal women who we are honoring tonight. They are leaders in our community. They are our sisters. They're our community leaders. They are the women that we all know and love, and we couldn't be happier than to acknowledge them today. I wish we could have the time to do more than four, but obviously, I could go on and on and on because there's so many phenomenal women here. But these four women come from different, like their lives, I don't know how many of you have intersected your lives, but we are all connected. We are all women. So, without further ado, I am going to ask Father Ryan to come on up, say some nice things about women. And I'll move out of your way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You stand. Just so Sandy knows, I had a mother ahead of me and two sisters behind me, and I didn't win anything, you know? I was outnumbered all the time, and thank God I was. Gracious and holy God, please give us intellect to understand you, reason to discern you, diligence to seek you, wisdom to find you, a spirit to know you, a heart to meditate upon you, ears to hear you, eyes to see you, a tongue to proclaim you, a way of life pleasing to you, patience to what you want for us, and perseverance to look for you. Grant us a perfect end. In your holy presence, blessed resurrection and life everlasting, we ask a special blessing on those women today who are going to be honored. They deserve this and so much more. Amen.
Amen.
Good job. So, we have four incredible women that we're recognizing tonight. And just to let you know who they are, one of them is Gil Ismailoff. She is part of the county's family here. She's been with us for 38 years. And she comes to us just with such great attitude, and she works so hard. And I know the director of her department, Steve Orsini, thinks so highly of her. I mean, he just loves her. And then we have Dr. Lori Newell, our Patterson Superintendent, who has had quite the busy few weeks, right? Yeah, I mean, listen, doing a budget, as we all know, is not easy. But Lori's been working at it really hard, and she's just an incredible role model for all of us, all the employees in the district, the kids. I mean, just a great role model. Then we have Alexandra Tasic, Esquire, who leads with her heart. Let me tell you that when you meet Alex and you talk to her, she's all about being by the book, doing the things that are right. And she knows the law, so she makes sure they're done right. But with that knowledge that she has comes her heart, and her heart plays into so many of the things that she does. A bigger heart probably that you've ever seen. And finally, O'Sheen Castillo. O'Sheen I have known for many years. Where is she? Oh. O'Sheen is at the Board of Social Services. As an administrator, she works really, really hard because she knows that the people in this county that need help need someone to lead them through. Now, we see everything that's coming down the pike, right? From the federal government, it's not pretty. And we have to protect our families. And these four women make sure that we take care of them because, God help us, if any of us falls behind and we don't step up to the plate to make sure that our families here in Passaic County are taken care of, we're going to be in big trouble. So, let me just say, I have so much respect for these women and women everywhere who work hard, and they lead. They lead, and they take care of people. And I, sometimes people say, oh, well, you know what? You can lead with your head, or you can lead with your heart, as I said about Alex. But it's the combination of the two that make these women outstanding and stand out to me personally. So, I have the honor of presenting the first acknowledgement, and that's for our own Gil Ismailoff. Come on up, Gil. Come on, Gil. We're so happy that you're here. So, you know, I just put this new sign up in my house. I'm actually thinking about giving it to my grandson, but it's so inspirational. And what it says is, and it's by Muhammad Ali, of all people. He said, "We don't lose if we get knocked down. We lose if we don't get back up again," right? Now, we've been knocked down, and we've gotten up, but when you get knocked down and you don't get back up, that's a problem. Gil has overcome so many challenges, right? Since you've been here in the United States.
Absolutely.
Right? But every single time, you addressed those challenges, and you didn't let it get you down. You made sure that you worked hard and you learned English, right? You came here for 38 years. You raised your kids. You built a life for yourself. None of that was easy. But Gil made sure that she did it. And that is why we are so proud of you because you did such a phenomenal job of, and you brought up your daughter. Are they here, your daughters?
Oh, my family.
Oh, yay! We love that. So, with, you know, having said that, I'd just like to read her proclamation. You'll learn a little bit more about her, and you will be as impressed with her as I am. Whereas, the month of March has been designated as National Women's History Month, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional women over the years, the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Gil. And whereas Gil is the first woman general supervisor from the Passaic County Buildings and Grounds Department. And look at this turnout! Look at this! Like, you guys, I don't know about you, but boy, it touches my heart to see everybody that's here for you today.
I love them. I love them.
So, Gil is an immigrant who came from Turkey. She arrived in the United States without knowing a word of English and began her journey alongside her husband, a Bulgarian-Turkish, excuse me, refugee who escaped oppression in Bulgaria. Whereas, Gil supervises over 40 employees of the second shift in the Passaic County Board of Social Services at 80 Hamilton, Passaic County New Courthouse at 77 Hamilton, District Courthouse at 71 Hamilton, Anex Courthouse at 6365 Hamilton, and the Passaic County Administration Building here at 401 Grant Street. Wow! That's a lot to be responsible for. So, Gil, in 1980, made the bold decision to relocate to the United States for a better life, where she welcomed three beautiful children into the world and embraced the challenges of building a new life together. Gil made some bold decisions in 1980, and she came here without speaking English. She learned how to speak English alongside her children by often turning into Sesame Street to help her along the way. That's a great show. And after eight years in the United States, she met a good friend, Sophie Dine.
Dinch.
Dinch, okay. Who became a mother-sister figure in her life, who provided an abundance of support and guidance as a new immigrant and worked together in Passaic County for 21 years. So, whereas Gil worked long hours, first as a tailor for two years, and then she came here to the county in 1988, 37, well, I keep saying 38, but it's 37?
It's going to be 28, yeah.
Okay. Gil couldn't pursue the medical career she had once dreamed about of being found, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Gil couldn't pursue the medical career she once dreamed of, but found fulfillment in celebrating the successes of her three wonderful children, two of whom earned their doctorates and one who is an educator that currently teaches second grade. Gil is grateful to her department's leadership for their support, which eventually led to being able to elevate her in her career over the years as acting supervisor, senior worker, supervisor, and group general supervisor by 2023. So now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the county of Passaic that we hereby publicly recognize and applaud Gil for the significant contribution she had made to the county of Passaic and to the community. And further, let it be proclaimed that this board wishes Gil health and happiness in all of her future endeavors. Gil, you are a young man. You are living proof that when you put your mind to something, you can do it. And I'd like to invite you to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. I am so honored to be here tonight. Thank you so much to all the Passaic County Board of Commissioners for this special honor in celebrating me for Women's History Month. It's meant to me so much. I would also like to thank you, Mr. Matthew Jordan, our county administration. And also, special thank you goes to Mr. Steven Orsini, superintendent of Building and Grounds, along with his team and Mr. Joe Becker. And without them doing all this hard work and celebrating this day today, it's meant to me so much. And if this come to me today because of all this hard-working team I have behind me, this is not only me. This is my team. It's working hard together, second shift, Building and Grounds. We all working hard during the pandemic and during all these years working together. It's come to us, to come to us like a family. And Building and Grounds Department is my family, my second family. And we all working hard together, and I appreciate all each of you guys. And I appreciate all our supervisors, all our workers, and all of you. And I'm so proud to be here and honored tonight. And also, I'd like to thank you, my husband. And 45 years marriage and raised three beautiful kids. And side to side and stand up as working woman and working woman-mother is not easy. But we did it together, and wonderful grandkids, wonderful grandchild I have, and wonderful friends and family. And they all side by side next to me. And I am all appreciate tonight and honor in this. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, you have two daughters and a son.
Yeah, and two grandkids.
And they're here?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
And of course, my niece and my two niece, and they are like my kids. And I have grandkids also, like so many.
That's great, right?
All my friends, and some of them my kids. All worked so many years, like, and some of them 20, 25 years, some of them 30 years, 15, 16.
Wow.
We are a big family, Building and Grounds, big family.
Nice to have that extended family. I also have certificates here from you, from our county clerk, Danielle Ireland Nimhoff.
Thank you.
And from Mikey Sherrill, from the 11th Congressional District, congratulating you on your award.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Come on, guys. Put this here for now. I'd like to. We're going to invite your family down over?
Who does it better, like?
Over here? Come on, family. Come on, Stu.
Come on, family. Come on, my family.
She wants you all here.
Come on, my family.
This is tonight. That's okay.
I got in front of here? Mm-hmm, cool.
I have to really squeeze in, though. Yeah, we'll squeeze in. Everybody's here. Oh, you have to go in the back. Come on, everybody. Thank you so much. That was very nice. Yeah. No, I'm going to go inside. This is the youngest. Oh! Yes, you have to pull this back out.
I got it, I got it. All right. We're continuing on tonight. First want to apologize for my voice. I'm a singer in a new band that was formed in LD35, and we've been on tour lately. It's a new band called LD35. You can see us somewhere in the district. So, there's a quote that says, "Leadership is not about what you're in charge of, but it's how you take care of those that are in your charge." And I think the women here in Passaic County, all across the board, in all facets of our labor force and government and education have truly exemplified that. I mean, just look at the landscape that's before us. Obviously, our county clerk, Madam Superintendent, our women in government, councilwomen everywhere, attorneys, our health and human services director, our health director, so many women, our county superintendent. As they say, that behind every man, there's a more powerful woman. I think here in Passaic County, our women are leading the way, and the men are following. So, I want to allow you guys to give yourself a big round of applause. That is truly, truly, truly remarkable and exemplary. And spoiler alert, this is not O'Sheen. So, I am not going to read my wife's proclamation. We thought that that would be cool. I think she deserves to be honored by my colleagues because I honor her every day. And so, I've had the distinction. I gotta go home with her, so I'm just saying. But I have the distinction of honoring a woman that is truly in the front lines, leading in one of the most crucial environments that we have, which is in our education, our Madam Superintendent of Patterson Public Schools, School System, that I am a product of, and many of us in this room. So, Dr. Newell, it is my honor to be able to read this proclamation. In your honor, I'm going to ask you to please join me. So, as we celebrate the month of March, it has been designated National Women's History Month, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by so many exceptional women over the years, the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Dr. Lori Newell. Whereas, Dr. Newell is the first African-American female superintendent to lead the Patterson Public School System, where she oversees the education of New Jersey's third-largest school district with almost 25,000 students, over 3,700 employees across 44 schools, as well as several collaborating preschool centers. Dr. Newell has earned a master's degree, MBA, and PhD. While working on her master's, she was inducted into Gamma Sigma Delta Honor Society for Academic Excellence. Dr. Newell previously worked at the Newark Public School System as the executive director of the School of Transformation within the Office of Innovation and Change. She has provided strategic direction and offered technical assistance to facilitate the success of new initiatives within the schools. Whereas, Dr. Newell worked in Patterson Public Schools from 2010 to 2016, where she first served as the executive director of Human Resource Services, and then as the chief reform and innovation officer. Dr. Newell has served as the superintendent of schools for the Essex Regional Educational Service Commission from 2016 to 2023. At that time, she was nominated by her peers and honored in 2023 as Essex County Superintendent of the Year. She was selected by the New Jersey Association of School Administrators as the 2023 Regional Superintendent of the Year for Region Number One. So, whereas Dr. Newell has worked as an adjunct professor at Montclair State University, continuing to teach graduate-level courses in educational leadership. Dr. Newell believes that quality education is every student's right, and all students will learn when they are given a safe, healthy, and supportive environment. So now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Dr. Newell for her significant contribution that she has made and continues to make to the county of Passaic and to the community at large. And also, let it be further proclaimed that this board wishes you, Dr. Newell, all health and happiness in all your future endeavors. Before you come up here, you also, as all the honorees do, have a certificate of recognition from our county clerk and as well from our representative, Mikey Sherrill.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm so honored to be here, and thank you to Deputy Director, my friend Sandy, for the honor, and thank you to all of the county commissioners here. And I also want to say just thank you to everyone here. I would not be here if not for my district, if not for the support, if not for my friends who are here supporting me, and I'm truly honored to be here. It is really an honor and a privilege to be here for Women's History Month. A lot of times, I think about how our paths are parallel. And I, you know, when I heard Gil's story, I'm also an immigrant. I came here in 1984, started, and really had to work my way through. So, you know, when I hear inspiring stories like what I heard before me, you know, I'm just always so honored to be in the same room as all the other honorees because, you know, it's a lot of work to get to this point. This month is very special to me. It's always very special because it's a time for reflection, it's a time for recognition, and really just honor the women who have gone before me, who have really blazed a path throughout history. It's a time to honor the tremendous power that we know that women have as role models in their families, in their community, and throughout the world. in their families, in their community, and throughout the world. When I think of a role model, I imagine someone who inspires others, someone who empowers others, and someone who challenges others to be the best versions of themselves. If you're privileged to know that type of woman, you are incredibly blessed because just watching them work is enough for you to see how to move forward as you challenge this life. My biggest role model, and I talk about her all the time, and my greatest influence in my life is my mother. She has taught me how to be supportive and she has taught me how to work, how to work hard, how to emulate what good behaviors look like. I have a sister, she has taught my sister and I what it means to represent myself. She has always told us what it means to represent your name and what it is to represent your family and other women. She has also taught us how we should behave when things get tough, when people are your adversaries, and how to walk with grace under fire. There are many women, past and present, that continue to be powerful role models, influencing others with their strength, their perseverance, their resilience, and their fire. Some of them make it into the history books, many don't, like my mother, our grandmothers, our aunts, our god sisters, whoever you can think of. They shape our lives in such profound and indelible ways. These women are educators, their daughters, doctors, artists, lawyers, advocates, aunts, whatever you name it, sisters, they are here and they are an inspiration to others. The value that these women bring to our society cannot be overstated. I have a daughter myself and the lessons that I teach her is how to be empathetic, how to show resilience under fire, to be accountable to one another, to be persevering through hardship, to serve one another, and to really leave this society better than when you found it. It is our job to have kindness, empathy, and to provide opportunity and justice for all. And so sometimes the things that guide my work is how can I provide for the next generation behind me? Whenever I make a choice, it is a choice to lift someone up, conversely, not tear someone down, and just to stand up for what is right. Because we know that we have to be a role model to everyone around us, even when you think that no one is watching. That is the responsibility that we as women all share. And so we just look to see the people around us, we see who are our role models, we see what we want to emulate, and we want to emulate good behavior. And that is what I have been raised by my mother particularly. So I want to thank you for this wonderful accolade and this acknowledgement tonight. I'm so incredibly proud to lead, I call it "the great" Patterson Public Schools. And because I know that we just have just incredible children. The decisions are hard, the days and the hours are very, very long, but these students are so well-deserved and I am just incredibly proud to be the leader of this fantastic organization. So continue inspiring, empowering, and challenging all of us to be our very best selves. And I also want to congratulate the other honorees here. It's so very well-deserved. Thank you, thank you, God bless you, and have a good night. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, you're here already?
I'm here already.
Great, great.
This one. This one. Okay. All right, good evening again, everyone. Alexandra? My councilwoman. Gotta change my eyes. Okay. I'm very excited to present this to you, Alexandra. I thank so much of you. You're a great, great lady. Whereas the month of March has been designated as National Women's History Month and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional women over the years, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize... The wrong one. For the record, I had the right one. To honor and recognize Alexandria Tasic Esquire. And whereas Alexandria has served two terms in entering her third term as a councilwoman for the Borough of Halden, including serving as council president. Alexandria has run the gamut of council committees for the borough, from ordinance drafting, contract negotiation with administration and personnel, to dressing up as the Easter Bunny, Mrs. Claus, and Elsa for special events. Alexandria Tasic proudly serves as Commissioner of the Passaic County Technical Vocational School Boards of Education and has sat on the Borough of Halden's Planning and Zoning Board as a member before being elected to the council. Alexandria Tasic is a longtime attorney and currently serves as senior attorney for Beckman &amp; Pollock, Morris Town Office of New Jersey. Alexandra remains committed and involved in mentoring students at her alma mater, Seton Hall University, both at WSOU and the radio station where she previously worked, as well as the law school. Alexandria volunteered with the Seton Hall Law Center for Social Justice as an instructor through the NJLEEP, the New Jersey Law and Educational Empowerment Project program, where she taught law seminars to eighth graders at School 20 in Patterson. Alexandra assisted with the Volunteer Lawyers for Justice Program through the New Jersey State Bar Association, where she aided income-sensitive families with housing disputes and prevented foreclosures. Alexandra works closely with other empowerment women in her community to try to offer open spaces for dialogue and networking, one such endeavor into growing into www.winewomenwingswednesday at the Underdog Lounge. Pretty good there, too. After setting out to uplift the dead friends alongside her dear friends, Alexandria Tasic, since immigrating to the United States from Serbia, has tried to help as many people as possible to persevere in the face of adversity and as she and her family once did with the aid of others. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners, it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Alexandria Tasic Esquire for her significant contributions she has made to the County of Passaic and the community. Be it further proclaimed that this board wishes Alexandria Tasic Esquire health and happiness for all her future endeavors.
Oh my goodness, it's always so weird to hear about yourself. I'm just truly honored to be here and I apologize, I'm suffering from severe allergies. I am so thankful to God that I have the ability to help as many people as I can on a regular basis and I'm so thankful and grateful for our amazing community here in Passaic County, from the board, our county executive, to my Passaic County Technical Institute family who's also here. Everybody in the audience, the dignitaries, our clerk, I just, I can't thank everyone enough because I come from when we were still in Serbia, before we fled war. We had a very big community that supported all of us, my mother and my grandmother at the helm. And if my mother ever knew what it meant to take off of work, she would be here right now, too. She was just like, "I took off when you were sworn in, that's it." So, true story. Same thing with my father. And that's all we have, and my brother who was born here, who lives in Florida, and it's too cold for him to visit this time of year. But I have had the grace of meeting so many people that I get to call family. And I'm lucky and honored that you're all here with me tonight. And speaking of the amazing women that came before me, my grandmother with tears in her eyes, I'm never going to forget it. We, I was three and a half when we left. When we went back to visit to try to encourage more of our family if they would want to leave before the war got worse, she always told me that she was old, she lived her life, but that she wanted me to have the best and that's why my parents were fleeing with me. And my mother always echoed her same sentiment and she said, "Don't ever be ashamed to ask for help when you're there, especially acclimating to the language, anything, and then one day you'll be able to help as many people that have helped you, and hopefully tenfold." That's it, that's really why we're here, right? We're, especially as a public servant, but we're here to help. And I'm just so honored to be in a community that really wants to truly do that, to help as much as possible. So in Serbian, we say "pomoc." So my grandmother, when she was still alive and we would talk on the phone, horrible service, you know, before WhatsApp and everything that we have now, she'd always be like, "Pomoc nikah, are you a helper yet?" And I was like, "Close." And then when we were living in Patterson, she would ask the same thing and then she started to learn Spanish because my mom told her we were learning Spanish because of all of our neighbors. So she'd say "ayuda," and I was like, "Almost." And so now I'm just so honored to be able to help. So thank you so much for honoring all of those in the community that truly want to help and it means the world to me. God bless.
Alexandra, we also have a certificate of recognition from our county clerk, Danielle Arlen Imhoff, and also from Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill.
Yes.
Good evening. Bringing in the rear. As my twin. Call Pat Lepore my twin. There are some powerful women have been honored tonight, but I have a few things in common with this young lady. For one, we are both bulldogs. I ran for school board in 2010. And I sit also on the Board of County Commission, Board of Social Services, where she serves and works. And the fourth thing we have in common, each time that Orlando is around us, we have to babysit him. So, O'Sheen, please come forward as you honor this young lady. Powerhouse, powerhouse. All right. Come on, come closer, come closer, bulldog. All right. Got to put on my... Whereas the month of March has been designated as National Women's History Month and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional women over the years, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize O'Sheen Castillo. And whereas O'Sheen Castillo was born in Santo Domingo, Dominican Republic, and at the age of three immigrated with her family to Patterson, New Jersey. And whereas O'Sheen Castillo, facing challenges of an immigrant family, was temporarily sent back to Dominican Republic to begin her education before returning to the United States in the second grade. Struggling to catch up in English, she repeated the grade but quickly excelled becoming an honor student and in seventh grade she demonstrated exceptional academic ability and was given the opportunity to skip directly to eighth grade, completing two grade levels in one year. And whereas O'Sheen Castillo attended Patterson Public School number 18, Patterson Public School number 27, and Passaic County Technical Institute... All right. Where she studied criminal justice and received her high school diploma in 2009. And whereas O'Sheen Castillo pursued higher education at Philly Dickinson University, earning a bachelor's in international relationship and communications in 2013, while in college she co-founded and served as a president of the Women Empowerment Association. And whereas O'Sheen Castillo became actively involved in politics, working on numerous Board of Education, city council, and mayoral election campaigns, her commitment to education led her to run for Patterson Board of Education and at the age of just 24 years old, she was elected, becoming the youngest elected official in Patterson's history. Whereas O'Sheen Castillo broke new ground as she was elected by her colleagues as president of the Patterson Board of Education, making history as the first Hispanic woman and first Dominican American to hold the position. And whereas O'Sheen Castillo was a former Director of Health and Human Services for the City of Patterson, Special Assistant to the Director of Passaic County Human Services, and currently serves as a Chief of Operations for the Passaic County Board of Social Services. And whereas O'Sheen Castillo credits her parents for instilling a deep passion for education, lifelong learning, and firmly believes that education is a passport to a better future and remains committed to empowering the next generations to achieve their fullest potential. And whereas O'Sheen Castillo is a devoted wife and proud mother of two boys, Elijah and Elias, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that is hereby publicly recognized and applauds O'Sheen Castillo for the significant contributions she has made to the County of Passaic and through the community, and be it further proclaimed that this board wishes O'Sheen Castillo health, happiness, and all her future endeavors. Give her a round of applause.
Thank you. Remind me not to give you access to my bio, I think you added more things than I had in there. But no, thank you, everyone, for this opportunity. Thank you to the county commissioners, and I think that's one of the most important roles that was not on the bio, is that I had the opportunity to work for the county commissioners. And for a long time I supported in creating the proclamations and supporting the event. So it allowed me to grow, to envision and to support and start in social services and really generate that love. So thank you to the county commissioners, thank you Commissioner Lazara, I really appreciate this honor. First of all, honoring glory to God always because I've had the opportunity to find purpose and it's in serving people and that's what I love to do and what I've been doing for many years. And patience for my two toddlers. But I also want to thank my parents. As Commissioner DeWors said, you know, we came, I was very, three years old, sent back, came back for second grade. You know, my dad worked in a factory making bricks and my mom worked in cleaning offices. And they always supported education. They always instilled, and they didn't speak English, but they said, "An A is an A in English and Spanish. You know, a B, I know your grades, bring me your report card, I know what it means and we'll figure it out there, you're only a..." figure it out there, you're only allowed to be an honor student." And they pushed, and they drove us to that, my brother and I, who's now in LA. So I definitely credit their support, their encouragement, and also to the wonderful women that I have around me, the wonderful support system that I can call friends, my family, you know, my mom is one of six women, my grandmother has six daughters and went to law school after having her sixth child, so I can't complain to her. She doesn't, being tired isn't a thing. You know, and I have the opportunity now, and the blessing, to have a phenomenal sister-in-law and a mother-in-law who are really supportive of what we do, and allow me to continue to grow, and also to the wonderful women, the friends that I have, the village that I have of women who are supportive, you know, who continue to encourage me to, you know, tell me to calm down sometimes, but continue to really encourage me and allow me to grow. Pushing you always to the next level, being, you know, a shoulder to cry on, a support system, they love my children, you know, and it's, they're the extended family, the aunties and uncles that I have the blessing to have. And like the other honorees, I've had the opportunity to work with Dr. Newell, as she served as superintendent, I was on the board, with Alex, with all of the partnerships with Halden, with Ms. Gill, thank you, because you ensure that our building is always ready and available to service our clients each and every day, and to the wonderful team that you have, so thank you. Forty-five years of marriage, we're gonna work on that, but, but thank you to all of you, thank you to my husband, who has really been supportive, I was getting there, to being supportive of me and, you know, the choices, being in politics, being in social services, hearing the, the stories, and a person that I can speak to, so it's definitely a team effort with my family, we're all in this together, and is continuing to serve our community each and every day, that's what we wake up, that's what we love to do, and thankfully, we're gonna continue to do it together, so thank you all, and thank you to the county commissioners. The county administrators.
Family and friends come up for a photo? And again, in front of the, your husband usually does this.
I love this. Yeah, I often, like, I actually said this to Danielle this morning, right? I had a fundraiser last night, and I said to her, "It's like a big family reunion," because you just love everybody that's there, and nights like this, it's the same way, we're all connected, and we just support these women that we're honoring tonight so much, and I, I am just thrilled that I could recognize you, and we have food downstairs, a lot of food. We didn't get it from Tecta, it's night. But anyway, we have delicious food downstairs, so I invite you all to go down, have something to eat, celebrate the women that are being honored tonight, and let's just give them another great round of applause. Thank you all for being here. That's right. So for those of you that are celebrating Ramadan, we have containers to go, if you want to take with, food with you, or, I don't know, what time, what's like? Seven? So it's up to you if you want to hang around? Oh, that's, okay, so that's 45 minutes about. Whatever you want to do, there's plenty of food, and please help yourselves and enjoy it. Thank you. Okay, folks, if you can work your way downstairs. Bon appetit, everyone. We're gonna continue with the meeting.
What number is it?
Okay, so it's L1 to L19. L17. 19 to L80? Okay. All right, folks. I'm gonna suspend county commissioner reports unless somebody press, okay? Okay?
Okay, everybody. This Saturday, up at the Vietnam War Memorial by the Public Safety Academy on Oldham Road, we will be dedicating a Soldier's Cross right in front of the wall. Saturday is National Vietnam War Veterans Day, and we're taking that opportunity to recognize our veterans with the Soldier's Cross. It's at 11:00 a.m., and we invite you all to come on up. It's, it's just gonna be a very nice ceremony, that we can acknowledge our veterans, both with us today and those that we've lost, so, that's my, thank you.
Okay. All right, next is the, there's no communication, the oral portion, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Made by Cruz, second by DeVor, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please step forward, state your name and address. Three minutes, and remember, anything that you say is a matter of public.
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Motion made by Duffy to close.
Second.
Second by DeVor, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. L1. Resolution authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to execute budget transfers between the 2024 budget appropriations pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-59.
So moved.
Motion made by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Lazara, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. On the consent agenda, I had a request to vote on item M18 separately. I'll take a motion for, on the consent agenda, for M1 to M17, and M19 to M80.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by DeVor, second by Duffy, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. Need a motion on M18.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Duffy, roll call.
Director, you said M19, it's M18, right?
What's that?
It's M18.
What did I say?
You said 19.
I meant 18.
I know you did. For the record.
For the record, M18, yes. Roll call.
Yep. County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Stane.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Stane.
Director Lapour.
Yes. Under new business personnel? Need a motion?
I'll make the motion, personnel.
Made by Cruz.
Second.
Second by Lazara, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes, need a motion on the bills?
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Motion made by Cruz, second by Lazara, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. Take a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Duffy, second by DeVor, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
DeVor.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Lapour.
Yes. All right, folks, thanks for coming, and safe trip home.